All right. I call this 370th meeting of the College Place Planning Commission to order. Mr. Rickert, will you please take over?
Monty Kornan.
Here.
Scott Duncan.
Here.
Eileen Davis.
Here.
Dan Lauterbach.
Here.
Dennis Olson.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, we have Kornan.
Thank you. I'll begin with the consent agenda. And do I have a motion to approve of planning commission meeting minutes from April 18?
So.
Please second it.
Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close post. Six by zero. And approve the agenda for today, May 16.
So load. Second.
And on favor?
Aye.
Close. That also passes by a zero. So the agenda item, the active agenda item is the public hearing of our sign code. And before we get into that, I'm going to return to our commission and address the Fairness Act or the appearance of fairness. I have a few questions for our distinguished panel here. Please advise if you have anything to gain or lose financially as a result of the outcome of this hearing.
No.
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 Whether you can hear and consider the application in a fair and objective manner.
Yes.
Yes.
And have you engaged in any ex parte communications with either proponents or opponents of the application? And if so, I ask that you please place those on record of any substance of such communications so that interested parties may have the opportunity to rebut those communications. Any ex parte communications?
No. I don't think so.
And I'll ask the member of the audience if you have any concerns in regard to fairness.
I don't have any concerns.
So hearing none, I will ask Mr. Rickert to please provide us everyone.
Okay, great. So, the nature of the request as is in the ordinance, the purposes of the proposed sign code is to promote and protect the public health, welfare, and safety by regulating existing and proposed outdoor signage of all types. It is also intended to protect property values, create a more attractive economic and business climate, enhance and protect the appearance of the community, preserve historical buildings, preserve the scenic and nature, natural beauty of designated areas, and provide a more enjoyable and pleasing community. It is further intended to reduce sign or advertising distractions and obstructions that may contribute to safety concerns essentially, and also to curb the deterioration of natural beauty and community burn. Background, the history of signage in College Place, it's pretty much limited to protect visibility at intersections, basically to public safety concerns, make sure that signage that is installed is done so in a safe manner and not an endangerment to the public. And then, really the only restriction besides visibility was the height of like pole signs. The maximum height, it was limited to the maximum height of the zone. So in your general commercial zone, it was 50 feet. And in the downtown mixed use, I believe it was 35 feet. And then, we haven't had any complaints really from signage. I mean, we get the usual, I mean, you know, people complaining about yard sale signs getting left up. But in terms of signage on buildings, we haven't really dealt with any major issues where there was complaint by the public. So, and then the downtown mixed use district, because of all of the improvements we've made to College Avenue and what's in our comprehensive plan, it offers us an opportunity to make sure that our College Avenue does stay. We've invested a lot in it so that we want to make sure that it stays nice looking. The comprehensive plan supports developing a workable sign code, as I'll point out here in the next section. So under our comprehensive plan, there are a few goals in there that talk about, you know, the main street. So a goal LU13 is the College Avenue Commercial District, and that's what created our downtown mixed use zone on College Avenue. And the purpose of that, the goal is, is to develop a commercial district reminiscent of the small town main street, serving the university and citizens of College Place with a mix of uses and also residences above the commercial buildings. But basically, create a pleasant pedestrian environment. So under that goal, there's policy LU13A, which initiated a concerted effort to renovate, upgrade, and refurbish structures in the process of redeveloping the College Avenue Commercial District, which kind of goes hand in hand with some design regulations that the city may adopt at some point. Goal LU14 is to encourage the development of existing new or remodeled facilities to complement each other in the adjacent areas in order to provide a visually pleasing area in which to work and shop. So it seems logical that we would start to regulate signage to make sure that it's a visually pleasing area. The policy under that goal is to improve the appearance of the commercial district by recognizing that the city is responsible for guiding the visual qualities of the district. So I underline that section of the policy because that's what this sign code is doing. It's guiding the community, the city's taking on that role to make sure that it's visually pleasing. This can be achieved through developing programs for landscaping, street fixtures, benches, pedestrian scale lighting, public restrooms, aesthetic considerations of the street, and stores, and by working with businesses to develop a workable sign code that the last statement in there specifically mentions the development of the sign code. And then support, another policy is to support sidewalk commercial activities where they will not interfere with the pedestrian and vehicular movement. So that part of it is, you know, we have wider sidewalks on College Avenue now. We're expecting to see some additional sidewalk activities like replacement of sand report signs, so that we want to make sure that there's some regulations on how that's done in a safe manner. And then goal LU15 is increase the amount of pedestrian activity, kind of goes along with what I'm just saying, make sure there's increased accessibility. So accessibility, when we say accessibility, we mean ADA, compliance, having a nice wide area so that people can move freely without hazards. So, and then LU15 under that goal improves sidewalks to ensure greater ease of pedestrian circulation through widening removal of obstacles, increase space at storefronts for use, uses with outdoor activities. And then policy LU15B, make the commercial district more accessible through improvements in the circulation improvement around the commercial district. So we've done that, we've made the wider sidewalks, we now want to make sure that there's some regulations to ensure that that area doesn't get totally cluttered up with signage or with, you know, benches, whatever, sidewalk, eating activities, that sort of stuff. We are required, under the Environmental Policy Act, to go through an environmental review. So I did complete a CEPA checklist, and it was submitted, and a determination of nonsignificance was issued by the city on that. It's a non-project action, so there's really no reason why there would be any sort of environmental impacts. Hearing notices were published in the Wall Union Bulletin on May 2nd. Notices were posted at City Hall, the annex, and the fire station. Workshops with the planning commission were conducted in March and April, and were open to the public. And we're also, the UB always mentions when there's like council meetings and council workshops and planning commission stuff, so those were in the paper as well. 110 notices were mailed to all commercial property owners within the general commercial and the downtown mixed use zones. So all property owners were notified at the hearing. And then the draft code was posted on the city's website. So I'll start out with the residential zones. There's not really much of a change in here other than, so home occupations, under our home occupation ordinance, we already restrict home occupations from putting up signage in residential areas. And then, no signage for commercial purposes would be allowed either, and it kind of goes hand in hand. And then, we expanded it to cover personal decorations. So, you know, occasionally you get the property owner that may collect, like, let's say, old gas station signs or something. So we want to allow for that, that sort of personal decoration of your property. Also, people, you know, people will put up, you know, the Nelson's residency, those sort of signings. Those signs are allowed, there's no permits required for those. There are some minor restrictions. You can have as many signs as you want, but you can't exceed 30 square feet, and no single sign may be larger than 12 square feet, so. Temporary vents, like yard sale signs, those sort of things are not, you know, you don't need a permit for those. They don't fall under that square footage requirement, but we do ask that they be removed within two hours of the event conclusion. Now we'll move into the business and commercial zones, so your downtown mixed use and your general commercial. So College Avenue's the DMU, the general commercial zones are, there's some spots up on Grove Street, the Home Depot area, C Street area, and then Commercial, excuse me, Commercial Drive, and then the areas down by Walmart. So wall signs, as we've discussed at the workshops, we've, initially the proposal was 3% of the building face area, and we've increased that to 25%. So when you're looking at how to determine that, you take the total face of the building, including the windows and the doors, and then, you know, you come up with your formula. Building name signs are not included in that. We don't, I don't think we have any, anything like that, but in the event that we want to name a building that's separate, that's 3% of the surface area, face of the area. Projecting signs are calculated from one side of the sign, and they, we decided that they shouldn't encroach into the public right of way or be closer than five feet from the back of a curb line. And that's just for public safety and also ease of the public works getting in there to do maintenance. And then signs flush against the building, they can be located anywhere on the surface of the building. Pole signs, they did get into it, so pole signs are the ground mounted signs, and they can have one leg or two legs. And nothing's changed in terms of what we talked about. They're permitted when the building does not cover the full width of the parcel upon which it is located, and when the building provides at least a 20-foot setback from the right of way. The total area for a pole sign, there's two different areas. For the downtown mixed use, it's 60 square feet, and the height is 20 feet above the ground. So if you're trying to envision a 60-foot, square foot sign, if you took a six-foot diameter, you know, from one side of the circle to another, the other, that's 28 square feet on one side. So you could have, you know, a fairly large size in the downtown mixed use for that pole sign. And then 200 square feet, this is a change. I increased, I believe, the general commercial, what we had talked about in workshops, was that it would be the same, it'd be 60 square feet in the general commercial. But I had a call from a developer that said that it didn't really work with, like, the monument signage that they have, like down at Meadowbrook Plaza, where you have, you know, a fairly large sign, has all the tenants for the strip mall in it. So we increased that to 200 square feet in the general commercial zone. And then the height is the same, 50 feet above the ground. And then there's, for those in the general commercial zone, any sign that is 30 feet in height must be at least 100 feet from any residential zone. So that's not from a residence, but a residential zone. So the distinction there is that you could have a non-conforming residence in a general commercial zone, and you wouldn't have to comply from that setback. Still in the business and commercial zones, sidewalk signs and sand report signs, the, in the DMU zone, they're not being larger than six square feet per side. And then in the general commercial zone, they can be up to 12 square feet per side. They can't contain any moving parts, and we decided that they must be of the A-frame design and constructed of a weather resistant material ready for exterior use. So the A-frame design was, and I'll show you some pictures of this, but we don't want any feet that stick out because those tend to be a tripping hazard. So the A-frame signs just come straight down, and there's usually a cutout at the bottom that gives them four separate feet. They were asking that they be removed during non-business hours, and the reason for that is, is that when the businesses are closed, those signs become a liability. You know, you'll get kids that'll put them out in the street, think it's funny, you know, stuff like that. Or the wind may blow them over and cause a hazard, and if nobody's around to pick them back up, then it becomes a nuisance. We want to make sure that there's a clear pedestrian passage of six feet, so there's no hazards to pedestrians, no time so they block or obstruct, you know, sight of visibility so at intersections, we want to make sure that they're out of the visibility triangles. And then our public works department determines where the visibility triangles are, so if there's an issue, they'll address it. No more than one sign shall be allowed per 100 lineal feet of right of way frontage in the general commercial zone. So you take Walmart, for instance, they usually have their, you know, their soda sale signs out there. And the way that 100-foot lineal spacing works, it would change any of the requirements for the number of signs they have out there. And then in the downtown mixed use, we would have no more than one sign be allowed per business in the DMU zone. And I didn't include this in the PowerPoint, but I also, I made a change that's not in your packet. I also mentioned there's an exception for people that are on corners. Corner lots could have two sandwich port signs. And it is a distinction between per business, so you could have, you know, one building that might have two businesses and/or three businesses. So there's, there is some leniency there. And then we're requiring proof of liability insurance, naming the city as additionally insured. It's $1 million per occurrence, $2 million total. It's a pretty standard requirement. And then also a home har, a whole harmless agreement for, from both the property owner and the tenant is also required. Still on the commercial stuff, banners used by businesses on site shall not exceed the maximum area for the total of all permitted wall signs of 25%. So what this is, is say you're a car lot, and you have your dealership signs hanging, you know, banners hanging off your parking lot lighting, that's considered, included in your 25% total. So it's not, and also it would deal with businesses that are utilizing banner type material that are attached to a building, so that there's, you know, no, there's no argument between, well, that's not a banner, it's a sign, or, you know, back and forth. The LED signs, we're allowing those both in the downtown mixed use and in the general The light rays need to shine only upon the sign and upon the property in which the sign is located. So, you know, if there, there are adjustments, I believe, in these signs, so that, you know, you can crank them up to be pretty bright. So there's some adjustments that can be done there if there's a problem. The LED signs, you know, you can do flashing stuff, so we're asking that if there is a, when there's a transition from one content to the next, that there be at least three seconds delay between those changing displays. And then the signs shall not exceed 48 square feet. And then when combined with a pole or ground mounted sign, the total square footage shall not exceed 60 square feet in the downtown mixed use, and 200 square feet in the general commercial zone. The LED signs, if they're within 100 feet of any residential zone, they must be programmed to operate only between the hours of 6:00 a.m. and 11:00 p.m. So again, that's from one zone to the next. So you take Gospel Outreach is putting up an LED sign that's within 100 feet of the, of residential across the street to the north. They already, actually, they told us that they were going to have it turned off at night. So, but this is just a requirement that they be turned off between 6:00 a.m. and 11:00 Andy's, Andy's had their LED sign, although there's residential across the street, that's all in the downtown mixed use zone, so they would not be required to turn it off at night. And then no more than one LED sign per property. Non-conforming signs, so signs existing and not conforming to the provisions of this chapter, which were constructed in compliance with the previous regulations, shall be regarded as non-conforming signs. Such signs may be maintained in their present condition unless hazardous, but may not be altered, erected, or relocated unless conforming with the sign code. So you can maintain them, you can, you know, replace the wiring if anything goes bad, you can replace new plastic, the panels on them, you know. One business from the next can change on those, but they can't be enlarged. So, and if, in the event that if they were damaged, if, you know, a vehicle ran into it and knocked it down, then they would have to come into compliance of the current, the new code. Prohibited signs, so signs that contain statements, words, or pictures of an obscene, indecent, or immoral character. Area of a sign, location, movement, content, coloring, or manner of illumination which may be confused with or construed as a traffic signal or traffic control device, and/or may hide from view any traffic or street sign or signal. And then advertising an activity, business product, or service no longer conducted on the premise upon which the sign is located, including off-premise signs. So if a business leaves a property and their sign remains up for, you know, an extended period of time, the city could ask that it be, take it down, at least the panel in it that displays the sign, the business that's no longer there. Signs that are specifically designed to move or have parts mechanisms that physically move, so no moving parts. And then for additional prohibited signs, so pennants, ribbons, streamers, spinners, or other similar moving devices, searchlights, balloons, or other air gas filled figures, flags, but not including the flag of any nation, state, city, or other governmental agency, or nonprofit organization, or advertising display constructed of cloth, canvas, light fabric, cardboard, wallboard, or other light materials with or without moving, without frames intended to be displayed for a limited period of time only. So that's a lot there, and I struggled with trying to make that a little bit more clear, and it gets muddled when you start talking about the flags, but the intent there is that your, the temporary flags and, and things of that nature, and I'll, I'll show you some Am I on the right page? Where'd it go? Exceptions to this are temporary events. So say you're the Honda dealership, and, you know, everybody knows that the end of the year Honda has their end of the year sale, right? Usually it's for like a month or two. So you could, you could put up signage for that special event. It's an annual thing they do every year. You could have, you know, balloons tied to cars, you could have, you know, special flags out there that are beyond, you know, what they have on their light poles, that sort of thing, advertising that type of event. Grand openings are special events, so we have provisions for one month before and after a grand opening, things of that nature. So here's the type of temporary signs, construction signs, grand opening signs, real estate signs, special events, one week prior and following the special event, yard sale signs within two hours of the end of the sale. And then we have to put in political signs in there, and we ask that they be removed within 10, like 10 days of the election. We don't want signs that are maybe hazardous. Billboard signs, we don't allow billboard signs. As commissions aware, there are no billboards in College Place, but there is, there are two that look into College Place up on Rose Street. But we don't want to allow any to locate, you know, the sale on Highway 125, you know. And also billboards fall into the off-premise signage, and we have the restriction on that as well. So you've seen these photos before, these are just some of the issues that we've dealt with in the past, and most of it is in dealing with temporary signage, you know, your yard sale sign, I mean, that, that was, the sign was in, the sale was in August, and the picture was taken in October. Then the taco sign is strapped to a city tree. You have, this is one of the Walmart, you know, cola signs, and it blew off of the sand report sign that they have, and it just laid in a ditch for however long. This is a good use of real estate or an open house sign, it's not blocking the sidewalk. And then, you know, you have the, the political signs. These were taken this year. What Walmart does is this is just a piece of OSB, and then there are layers of whatever the current sale is, and they just zip tie them to, to their sand report sign, and that's how they ended up blowing off. So you can see the strip mall where, you know, there's a lot of window area down here, and, you know, I didn't go do all the math, but, you know, they're certainly within, you know, 25% of the, what the codes are requiring. Here's Andy's sign, it's probably a little bit taller than the 20 feet, it's probably like 25 feet or so. And portion of this, where the sidewalk is, is the right of way, and it does encroach probably a little bit. So, you know, in the event that, you know, a big truck ran into it and knocked it over or something, I highly doubt that that would happen. It's pretty stout, but they, they would have to move it back a little bit. And there's a sign hanging into the right of way, lots of clearance, I mean, that's probably at least eight feet, so it's not a safety hazard, but this is an example of a business that is no longer located at this store on College Avenue, on the Autobahn. Gosh, I think it had been closed for at least five years. think it had been closed for at least five years. College Place Food Mart, I don't know if that's, it's an original sign, I mean, in terms of the, the support structure, there's, there's plenty of clearance, there's at least seven or eight feet there. This is an example of a sandwich board, or a sign, sidewalk sign that we, we wouldn't want, because those lights, if the sign gets, you know, tweaked in any way, it can be a tripping hazard. And then, they're not exceeding it right now, but convenience stores tend to, over time, accumulate a lot of advertising on the exterior of the building, and for the most part, they've all, they've contained it all within their windows right now, but I could see it becoming an issue and visual distraction, and... This is the Dairy Express, but it's, it's taller than what the new code would allow, and it also encroaches, it hangs, the post is in, on credit property, but the sign hangs over into the right of way. Uncoal Bank, I think that's close to the twenty feet, there might be a little bit of encroachment with the sign into the right of way. This is an example of a hanging sign, the, the height here is getting close to the minimum for clearances, and it does encroach into the right of way, for the most part. Rogers Bakery, lots of clearance, I don't think there's an encroachment there. And the sizing of those signs is appropriate to the, to the building. This is our sign, even we're encroaching a little bit, about six inches. This may go away, we're not sure what we're gonna do here. And then we have our billboard, or our, what do you call those? Reader board. This is a sign I picked up before the last workshop, it was at Highway 125 and Meadowbrook, and it was tied to one of our trees, and definitely an off-site premise signage, state line sale.
A bus.
Yeah.
Let's see.
So this is Fiesta Tapatia, they have a lot of signage on their building, most of it is banner type material. They also have, I guess you could classify this as a sandwich board style, or, you know, sidewalk signage, although it's on credit property. The flags, this is probably at times leaning and blocking the stop sign, and then you get, this is out front, so on College Avenue before the tracks, this is all within the right of way. The size of the sandwich board sign is, is appropriate in terms of what we would require on College Avenue, but the, the little aliens are, you know, just little plastic cardboard cutouts, and they're just staked into the ground, they remain out there all the time, the flags block the rail crossing signal, and then there's an excessive amount of signage on this building for the size of it, it's in the windows, all these Metro, I think that's a cellphone company or something, so, so the way we would treat this sort of signage is we would do an inventory of what's there, 'cause it's all, it's all temporary nature, it's, they're banners basically attached to the building, and would, would, as they deteriorate, we make them take them down and do signage that's more appropriate and to, within the, the scale of the building, the percentage. And that's it for the pictures and the presentations. Are there any questions?
Are the flags going to come down on that building because it does block the railroad crossing and the sign?
The flags, the flags, anything we, they're temporary in nature, and they're, they're different than the signs that are on the building, I would treat them as, as a nuisance, and we would have them removed once this is enacted.
I'd like to call back, John, and thank you for commiserating the items under the prohibited, I think that makes it much clearer than the paragraph I was trying to read.
Great, great, I'm glad.
The sandwich board signs are considered temporary, so you request them to come in at night, but are the flags in, under the same situation, would they be required to be brought in at night also?
They, uh... Well, the flags, unless there's an, an event, they would be prohibited, so if they're, if there's some sort of sale that they've got going on, I suppose that they could, they would be allowed to, to put a sign, the, the flags out there.
The flags and the sandwich board signs are basically the same height?
No.
The same.
Sandwich boards would be permitted.
Right.
But would have to come in at night.
At night, right.
The banners, vertical banners, that Metro and Boz, Boz, those would be prohibited outright, except in a temporary.
Temporary thing.
Some area.
But then the temporary would be considered to be coming in at night then too?
Well, I don't know that we've addressed that in the code.
But those, these particular flags need to go somewhere else because they do block.
Well, right, yeah, there's a, there's a safety issue there, so we wouldn't allow them in that particular location. It may be prudent to look to, to the code and see if we need to clarify these temporary event things, if they can come in at night, I don't know, I mean, I'm thinking of like a car lot, when they, you know, tie balloons to a car, and do you want them to have to pull, or, let's say the ducky derby occasionally, that's a special event, the, the big duck gets moved around to businesses, you know, they, it's secured, and I don't know, it would be a burden to ask them to, to take that sort of thing down.
Right, okay, that makes sense.
If it's not gonna be an issue, these things are, I mean, I, I suppose some kid could pull them out and throw it into the street, but, you know, it'd be a lot easier to drive over a flag than it would be a sandwich board sign, and I haven't heard of any instances where that's happened. You know, you can't take one of those flags and stick it in the street and have it be an obstruction, like, like a sandwich board sign where you can set it up in the street.
Right.
I have a question about the pole signs, I don't know if you can get back to that slide, but what I thought I read was allowed when the building does not continue through the full width of the parcel and it is set twenty feet back from the street.
Right.
Is it both of those conditions, or is it either or?
It should be both of those.
But if there's ample setback, but the building fills the full width of the parcel, a pole sign would not be allowed? I guess I, a question why that would be a limitation.
Well, I suppose we could take that full width of the parcel out and just make, make sure that it has a setback, and in thinking of that, what particularly comes to mind right now is Andy's building, theirs goes from basically 12th all the way north to the edge of the property, yet they're obviously twenty feet back, and under the way this is written, they wouldn't be allowed to have a pole sign, and that doesn't make sense. So let's, if you guys are inclined, let's strike that. Is there anybody else on that? Is there a green sign on that, or? So that's page five of the resolution for the ordinance.
Is that something you wanna be voted on?
Well, I mean, if, if that's the consensus, then we'll...
What was the rationale for stating it that way to begin with?
Well, I think what happened initially, we, we had the full width of the lot in there, and then...
Initially allowed pole signs to be in the right of way too?
Yeah, yeah.
So combining that restriction outside the right of way, then with the additional setback, it kind of becomes a new requirement.
Yeah.
It seems reasonable.
Okay, so from what I'm hearing, is the way it should read is pole or round mounted signs are permitted when the building provides a twenty-foot minimum setback from the right of way?
Correct.
Okay.
I think that would be...
We can make that change.
Any other questions, comments from the commission? We'll come back and check in if you, we opened it up for public comment.
Okay.
So I would like to do that now unless there's any additional thoughts at this time. All right, so, it is 7:42, and I'm opening this meeting for public testimony, if you would like to comment, we ask that you, speaking of microphones, state your name and your address.
You're at the door.
Well, first I'd like to say that you answer a ton of the questions all the time. I have down here grandfather clause, talk about that. What I was wondering is, what kind of maybe the impact that we had in a lot of the situations you talked about that could happen with signs, have we, has that been an issue, really in town?
My understanding, and that John might wanna jump in here, is if it has been, it's been addressed on, on request, we haven't had a proliferation of, you know, intentional misconduct, it does happen, and we live in a great community that people have righted those issues when they've been notified.
So I think, Dave, you might have missed the first part of this presentation.
Right, all right.
And, and, so the history is, you know, we've minimal regulations, permits are required, limits to the, the height, but no, to answer your, your direct question, there, there haven't been really any negative impacts or complaints from the public, other than with sandwich board signs. We, we had one lady a few years ago that tripped over, but we addressed that just by contacting their real estate departments, agencies, and they, you know, have been very excellent, they don't put them in sidewalks anymore.
Okay, another question I had was, my building is considerably more than twenty feet setback from College Avenue, but it's right on the line on Broadway, so, what setback are we referring to? What sign is, from what sign is?
I think it says...
Could I go back to by me because my building is...
No, I think, and we could put a front here to sit back on there. No, I mean, I, I think the idea behind, the logic behind that is, we wanna make sure that there's sufficient room for a pole sign in where you're locating it, for, you know, disvisual...
I figured that, but I just thought I'd tell this one. The twenty feet that you're allowing for the height of the sign, is that the top of the sign, the bottom of the sign?
That would be to the top.
Close to you to the top of the pole?
That would be to the top of the sign, so from the ground to the top of the sign.
You talked about the ducky derby, I wrote that down, 'cause I have it on my story. I thought that, I thought that your presentation was pretty clear, actually, I wouldn't mind having a copy of that document.
Sure.
Because there was a lot of stuff there and I can't remember it all.
Yes.
So when I'm looking at my sign specifically there, my pole, the pole actually is on our property, is it not?
I believe, yes, I think where the sidewalk ends and the block top starts is the property.
And it just sounded, it kinda sounded to me like the general requirements that you're leaning towards doing are more for aesthetic value to keep the town looking as appropriate as we possibly can, more than danger or, you know, other uses, but, yeah, I don't have a lot, you did a good job answering a lot of my questions that I had.
Besides having any flashing signs, I think you're absolutely correct, and we don't want a whole bunch of flashing signs down, down Main Street, but they, you know, basically, it needs to be, you know, we wanna have a nice Main Street, and signs could ruin that.
I agree.
Yeah.
I agree. I want more people coming down that road too, so...
Oh, yeah.
I'll be really honest with you, I have not, I don't know if I've ever driven by the sign at midnight or something, you know, really, when the town is sleeping, so I don't even know how bright my sign is, have you?
I, I mean, I've been by there after...
I do know that our sign is turned down to a very low moon, 'cause you can adjust If someone complains to you, I'd like to know about it.
Okay.
'Cause we don't wanna be a nuisance.
It's a fair amount of ambient light out there, not too...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
One thing I would say, I have, maybe I should, just to you, you're allowing me a twenty-foot sign there, but on both sides of my sign, you already have two trees that are starting to block the visibility of my sign. If Andy's Market was willing to pay for some other shrubbery there that was more of a lower elevation, could that happen?
You would have to talk to the city administrator about that.
Hadn't thought about that, but you're right.
Well, that, that might be the case for a sign that's lower than, when the canopy of the tree gets up bigger, you'll, the line is...
It'd have to be really low.
Yeah.
Low of the tree.
Well, right now, for sure, yeah.
You need to drive down College Avenue about ten or eleven o'clock, it is so beautiful and quiet.
It's very lovely.
Yeah.
Especially in the winter when it's snowing, it's really pretty.
Oh, yes.
I'll have to tell you that the new street cost me a lot of money, a lot, but I still think it's worth it, so, I'm glad it's there. I feel confident now of driving down College Avenue with little potatoes on the back of my flatbed and they're gonna stay on my flatbed, so, it's much heartache and frustration that it caused my customers, it's still, and we're, the store is good for it, so...
Thank you for your patience.
Dave, before you go, may I get you to state your name and address?
Oh, yes you may.
For the record.
My name is Dave Gordon, and my commercial address is 1117 South College Avenue, and my home address is 3320 Ranch Road, Wall Wall.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
John, any additional comments on your part?
I have none.
John, would you just, just because other people ask us, what's the difference between our, the College Place signage and Walla Walla signage, other than the size of the town?
Well, I don't, I don't really know what their signage regulations are in the, I don't recall what they are in their, like, general or highway commercial, but on the, in the downtown area, I think it's 25%. Monty, you might know better.
For all my...
And I guess I should state for the record that we did look at Walla Walla sign ordinance, we looked at Richland's, and we looked at Leavenworth's. And so my view of what we're proposing here, this is pretty bare bones, it's not real intrusive on the business owners, yet does accomplish what, you know, we want to do is protect the visual environment.
Did you look at Las Vegas?
I have to go there in December every year to visit in-laws, so...
What not to do?
I'm pretty sure there's no regulations.
Turn back to the commission, any other comments on this?
Just a comment, whenever you start regulating whatever it is, you're impacting people in one way or the other. And there are restrictions here that speak to things that people have done for a number of years, that all of a sudden now they're going to say, hey, no, I couldn't do that. So this is an education process involved, too.
Do you anticipate significant enforcement?
Well, we'll definitely, I mean, we're gonna have to, you know, talk to the Fiesta Tapatia and probably the mini mart on College Avenue, just to inform them of what the codes are. And then I'm sure we'll, you know, send them a letter and explain things to them and meet with them to get them into compliance. And then, in terms of just your general stuff, you know, like yard sale signs and whatnot, you know, we'll put some information out in the newsletter and probably on our website. For the sake of just the schedule, this will likely be introduced to council at the June 13th as a workshop item, and then final adoption on a June 27th meeting. And then, June 30th would be the deadline where any applications that want to get in under our current regulations, we would need to have a complete application by June 30th. I probably should note that I did not receive any letters from anybody regarding this. I did talk to, like I said, I talked to some commercial property owners, well, the owner of the development north of Home Depot, Whitman Crossing, he was signing up for that. He was the one that brought the square footage issue to my attention on the, for strip malls. And then Dan Ward, who is the son of Ben Ward of Ben's Beeline, is interested in putting up the Beeline sign, and it's, I think it's 40 feet tall, and I told him that if he wants to do that, he needs to get his application in, his engineering foundation for the sign prior to this June 30th. He believes that he has vesting because the sign was up before and it was taken down as part of the cars project, but the city actually purchased that sign. We paid a little over $22,000 for the sign, and then we also bought a triangular piece of ground from him for another $2,000. So although he does have possession of the sign, we did buy it from him, so his vesting rights, according to our interpretation of vesting laws, he's not vested. So he got hold of me before, I want to say before or around the last workshop we had, and he's working with a company called Signorama, been in contact with them, so they're fully aware that they have some time to get an application in before the change. But I did not receive any comment letters from him regarding these changes.
John, I think the only other one that I can remember us talking about was the Apple sign across the highway there being, we were talking about it being electronic and changing all the time?
Yeah, and I, since we don't have any regulations that would limit, you know, the duration of how much time the sign needs to be up between transitioning, I haven't contacted them, and I actually haven't even gone out to see if it changes.
But you're up what in here, the three-second rule?
Yeah. Yeah, we would implement that with them as soon as it's effective.
That's what my sign is, three seconds.
Yeah, I didn't notice any issues with your sign, Dave.
I think probably one of the first responses you will get is, I have to have a permit?
Well, that may be a response, but it's, we've always required it. So I'm sure there have been signs that have gone up without a permit, and there probably will continue to be signs that go up without permits. It's just, you know, I have one building inspector, you know, if I see something that I don't recall passing my desk, then I'll mention it to our inspector and he'll red-tag them, but it's, you know, we're a small operation and we, work, stuff's gonna get installed without permits. I will note that fines double, though, if you don't get a permit and we catch you. So you have a recommended action at the end of your staff report, I believe. So the staff report, first couple of pages there, and page three of the staff report. Someone needs to make a motion. Not to hurt you along or apply any pressure, but...
So close to the public hearing, and I have a motion regarding the sign application.
So, Lou?
Adopting it with the changes that we...
With the changes that we just discussed and as written, other than that.
I guess it's not adopting it, it's recommending it to council, is that?
Yes.
And you had a first and second, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, passes by zero.
And who made the second from that?
Any other business?
I guess, you know, I'll just mention again, I have comp plans for you guys to study upon, and in the next coming months, I don't know that we'll have anything next month for you guys. We'll see how far along we get with our comp plan going. We might have maybe a workshop or something, but so, but we will be busy with comp plan stuff primarily going forward for the rest of the year, so...
Have you heard from Mr. Bottomman, whether or not he's going to be presenting the addition to his, to Pliny Development?
I have not, no. Yeah, he's got probably a couple more phases to go in there. We met a couple weeks ago with our consultant, Greg Dorn. He's out of the Spokane area, he's a long time, a lot, huge, huge history in planning in the state and very knowledgeable. And we met with a lot of key property owners. We had three days of meeting.